Probably. Um. Pause. Stop video? No.
Those cameras want, the microphones pick up everything.
Okay.
I am very careful.
Yeah, watch how you bash me.
It's a lot different than the old ones.
Okay, I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order. First on our agenda is to approve last month's, um, minutes.
Someone.
Second.
First, first by Brad, second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Are we all voting?
Yes. Probably. Uh, next is Sandy had to got tied up at work.
Okay.
Uh, next on our agenda is to approve the voucher for Arlene.
So move.
Motion by Norm, second by Dave. Was that a second, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, first on our agenda is the Aldi. App site plan application. Are the Aldi folks here?
Chairman, are we looking for approval for their site plan tonight?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Recommendation for approval.
Okay.
How, whatever we see your conditions, whatever we gotta come up with.
Just noticed that something was missing. We didn't, we don't have a checklist in this.
Uh.
Um, well. Why is that?
It's, it's an incentive building package.
But nonetheless, they should meet all the requirements. For our package that we have to look at.
Excellent. Yes, I think you're right. Um, what conditions do they need?
Well, in the packet, there was no elevations.
Uh. No elevations in that one.
No, there's no elevations.
Yeah, there's all, yeah, I did notice that. Okay.
Uh. They've got them. Get you more.
You might be able to answer some of those questions.
Got them with them.
Yeah. You're done, Norm.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna hit, you know, so quick.
Well, fun.
Yeah.
Sure. Uh, I know this will be a little bit hard to see, but this is kind of an overall area. First of all, I, I, I'm Curtis Charles Collier Engineering and Design for the, uh, land civil engineers for, on behalf of Aldi. Uh, for the project. I also have Lou Kibbling here. He's the Director of Real Estate for, for Aldi as well, uh, with me. Um, so we're proposing to build a six, a little over nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty square feet plus or minus new Aldi store. It's, uh, located, uh, I don't know how familiar, feel familiar you are, but you have the roundabout coming in off of the bridge. It's at the corner of, uh, Staley Road and Stony Point. Um, there's an existing, I think it was a gas station. It's been several different things over the years, kind of in the corner. So as part of this project, we would, you know, be removing all of that, uh, demolishing it to grade. Uh, leaving the pavements and stuff kind of rubbleized and played the building and all of the, uh, other associated site items and everything would be removed off from there. Um. You know, we, we've supplied the town with all of our due diligence for traffic study, uh, real technical. Uh, we did wetlands on the site. There was a bit of a stall in the project. This project, this site had some areas of wetlands that we had reviewed by the Army Corps. Uh, we received a favorable determination back from them that they were non-jurisdictional. So what we did is we kind of retooled the site, uh, to position it in a better location. Could create some additional buffers and things like that. Um, the project site itself is proposing two, uh, entrances into the site. One off from Staley, Staley Road here and one off from Stony, uh, Stony Point over here. Um, you know, we're handling our storm water, um, per D C's requirements with some bioretention areas around there. Ultimately, a stormwater pond at the lowest point of the site discharged to the creek. The drainage patterns are all staying the same within the site. Um, utilities are adjacent to the site. Our bottom water hookup is on Stony Point. Um, you know, we're gonna extend the public sewer, uh, one man hole across Staley Road. And then we're lateral into our building. Um, we're, we're working with Bob on that, on that process. Um. And then, you know, gas and electric will be coming off from connections, uh, along Staley Road as well. Um, we're also proposing, um, per some of our earlier conversations with the town. To provide that connection to the, the walkway that runs, uh, along Grand Island Boulevard. So there'll be a pedestrian connection, um, crosswalk and whatnot over to Aldi as well. So that people that are traveling on the sidewalk have that particular connection. Um. You know, lighting, uh, landscaping, things of that nature are all really in, in line with the town standards and requirements. So, uh, when we provide the, the plans, there's a, a pretty ample landscaping plan that we have. Um, as you can see, um, lighting is all within the town code. Uh, we are proposing a pylon sign for along Grand Island Boulevard as well. Um, we currently show us this location, although we've had some discussions that maybe, maybe it's, there's an opportunity to move it a little bit farther south along the property line. Get it away from the roundabout. So, you know, all the internal, it's gonna kind of coordinate that and look at that and see if maybe we want to spot that down. Just to get it away from the roundabout and. In a nutshell, that's really it. I mean, you can see the building elevation. So the front main entrance is, uh, basically in the southwest corner, you know, facing Grand Island Boulevard. Um, there's the, the truck docks with, uh, it does have a, a one traction closure over there. Um, that it's gonna be along the, the Stony Point side. So the maneuvers for trucks would be they would come in, pull in, back up, and then exit, uh, the same way they came in as well. So they wouldn't be exiting the primary entrance for, um, for car parking would be off from Stony Point. Um. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have anything on that.
Can we just move you over to this?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, I can give you as many. So, I mean, these are the elevations. I'm, I'm not sure technically, because I'm not the architect, but I can tell you. So this is the main entrance.
Right.
Um, you know, which is this front corner that you're gonna see, uh, from Stony Point. So here's the, the trash enclosure. So this is the truck dock side that's gonna face Stony Point. And again, there's, there's a pretty significant, we, so we have retained some vegetated buffers and existing stuff as much as possible along Staley. There's really not any over along Stony Point. It's kind of bowed over quite a ways. There's some brush and stuff that's gonna be cleared as part of the project, but that would be along this elevation. But we are putting, uh, as you'll see in the landscape plan, what if new plantings around both sides as well to start to create those new natural buffers.
What type of material is this?
Um, that's a pan, aluminum panel, the, the main grave body.
Yeah, those are pre-fab metal panels with the insulation and all that inside of it.
Brick or stone?
That's a, yeah, block.
And then up here.
It's like a split face block, right?
And then, is that like a sin, a s- split place, uh, cinder block?
It's more of a, a large brick black.
Okay, like a decorative block? Is it a veneer or some part of the wall?
It's veneer.
Okay, and up here?
And that's a metal panel on the backside of the canopy. It's like a metal panel.
Now, what type of colors are, is it like all these have a specific color?
Yeah, it's like gray, similar to what it's looking like, uh, light gray to dark gray. And some of the canopy areas more of a silver. From signage.
So this would be Stony Point, we'd be looking at this?
Yes.
And Staley would be looking at this?
Staley would be looking at that, but there's gonna be a lot of trees that. Basically. I would most of that fact.
Great. So, it's just a, just to catch up with this, we had a, we had a pre-meeting on this July, August, that's here.
Yes.
Somewhere around there. And originally, when they came in before they had their wetland mitigation, the building was, uh, quite a bit more south.
Yeah, we were down.
East. And it was really close to Stony Point, to the point where it concerned us. And we, we, we made it very clear to hit, be all these folks, that we wanted to see some substantial plantings there. We understand the building is kind of a corporate model, you know, and you're, they're a little bit stuck as far as what they can do aesthetically. But they were more than, more than willing to plant things in and make the green, you know, appropriate. We also talked about sidewalks along, um, Stony Point, but there are none. So there was really no place to connect. So we, we thought as a good trade-off for that, to hook to the bike path, it would bring more value than creating sidewalks and no. So that's why they, we got to that.
Pete, a comment about the sidewalks. Did, there's sidewalks across Staley Road on the, uh. Wendy's there, all the way up to houses.
Yeah, right.
Would you consider a sidewalk on your side up to your driveway?
So they're ignoring Staley.
On Staley. See where the crosswalk is there?
Sort of the crosswalk around about.
Where the crosswalk is?
So there, there is a sidewalk that ends with the Tim Hortons there.
Yeah.
Um, I think on our side, there's a ditch all along that area. Um, which would make it pretty hard to put the, the sidewalk along the ditch.
Well, you put it on the inside of the ditch then. I mean, to me, that would be the fastest way to get to the store.
There's no, the, you're saying, Norm, you're saying from the roundabout to the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
There's no ditch there, right? That's, that's, because that's literally.
That's a shoulder.
Well, you got, you got upright curb from the roundabout.
Right.
The splitter ramps upright curb.
Right.
As opposed to walking all the way down along the bike path and going in, the quickest way would be to, you know, take the crosswalk, walk over to the, if you had a sidewalk there, and then walk along the driveway into the store.
So if, if they did that though, Norm, and I'm not trying to either way, but it would have to come along Staley and then down the entranceway. And then can basically connect to the other one to do it. Otherwise, it's just be dumped into driveway.
It would come right across to here and right down along the parking lot.
Right. Right to the bike path connection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, before we get off track on that. The design and performance standards ask for you to do the building, all four sides, kind of similar. So could these be duplicated? On. Other sides? Even if you don't rebuild them, even if that was.
Yeah, what is that material?
This looks like brick.
Is that brick?
Um, that is a Nijihava. It's called, it's like a. Nation.
Yeah, it's kind of like a faux, it's a faux brick. I mean, it is a brick-like material, but it's not actual brick.
It's like a.
No, it's, it's more like a composite, like, uh, wood, they call that stuff.
Like a James Hardy type board?
Like Hardy, yeah.
Okay, looks like bricks.
It's Nijihava though, it's a Japanese product or something.
But couldn't.
So it looks like wood panels.
Couldn't these be duplicated? I mean, you've got it here, this side, but nothing on Stony Point, nothing on Staley. Couldn't you incorporate? If you jump in there.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I'm with you on that. You know, it's just something to, to break up that map.
Saying that the.
Because there's houses, they're gonna look at it.
This, when you go to public hearing, the neighbors are gonna come there. And if I, in my front yard on Staley, I'm gonna be looking at that.
Well, you're gonna be looking at trees.
Yeah, but you're still gonna see the building.
It's, it's.
We're gonna be able to totally hide the building. It's still gonna be there. What's your, what's your height elevation? Um. You know, what's, it's eighteen, yeah, almost twenty feet in the air. I mean, you're not gonna be able to have a tree that's kind of hide the whole building.
Well, that's still gonna be a building. Sorry. It's, that is still building. It's just the, building in a different color.
No, I understand.
Yeah, but it just has a little variation from.
So the, the design standards actually ask you to do same thing like, uh. Like, just like something similar like. It's the same four sides of the material so that we don't have.
Yeah.
A building like, not to pick on anybody, but the center of town where you have the storefronts in the front and in the back, it looks terrible. Not that this looks terrible, I'm just saying that we're trying to keep it looking good all the way around.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You, you wouldn't have to.
How the panels were, the metal panels with that, but, you know, I, I do remember we had some brief discussion with that.
I mean, you're gonna have these panels and this material, you would just swap it out for that material. I mean, I'm not an architect, but.
Hmm, yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Am I doing it right? Am I in the right, you know, they kind of put like maybe two of those there and maybe even one here.
We're not talking about the windows.
Not the windows.
I don't know, that structurally, I just gotta check that, because this, this building, it's all new, uh, the way it's, the structure's done and all that, so. Uh, and again, it's mostly panels.
What are they like cement panels?
Oh, they're, they're like, like games metal with.
Yeah, they're pre-engineered.
They're like composite though.
Well, if you're gonna do it here, obviously you're gonna have this and have this pre-made thing here. Why couldn't this side just?
Literally decorative.
Yeah, it's decorative, you know, just decorative. I mean, just, I'm just throwing. Is it, is the entire building block?
No, it's.
No, it's metal panels.
So it's the panels itself? Okay.
Because they're insulated.
All right, so it's a pre-fan, this is a pre-fan.
They must pull together somehow.
Yeah, the, the roof's the same way. And where it goes over, so.
It was a big, big folder?
Well.
No, no.
It's an engine.
I mean, right, but those panels on it.
Free engineered building.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting.
Kind of like a big Lego building.
Or, or similar.
Okay.
Like each.
Okay.
Interesting. All right, now. One on the, on the Staley roadside.
Okay, so we've kind of done that. We've kind of talked about that stuff. Back to what's, I wanna fall back.
See the sidewalk along Staley Road there from the crossover to the driveway. And then down along the driveway.
Instead of the bike path.
No, I mean, that's fine with the bike path, but I think the quicker way to get there is gonna be coming across the, the crosswalk there, walking along Staley.
Yeah, but if, if I understood you correctly, you were gonna connect to, that's correct. Bike path here. So you're gonna come across where it's already designated now, correct?
That's there.
Correct.
And you're, then you come, come down here with this path and then you were turning in to get here this way.
That's correct.
Norm, you're saying to come here and come this way to.
To where the driveway's gonna be and then.
Here to the driveway and then come.
Adjacent to the drive, adjacent to the parking lot.
Or cross over the drop, then whether they're gonna walk.
I think you should cross over the parking lot, otherwise, rather than dumping foot traffic into a parking lot.
I think you're creating a little bit more of a dangerous situation, putting people closer.
Yeah.
It's a roadway and in the line of people entering an entrance than, than where there's already.
I mean, there's gonna be nobody down here. Maybe they could swing this more this way, Norm.
Yeah, I mean, makes it easier.
And make me come all the way here and then tee up, maybe this way.
If anybody's coming from this way, there's a way down there.
You've got a bio detention pond that's gonna be there.
Goes nowhere. This goes nowhere.
Well, it goes a very long.
No.
It takes a long.
That's part of the, that's part of the state greenway trail, bike path. That comes over the bridge. That's what comes from all of, uh, um, Falcon Wood and all that. So you ride, theoretically, you could ride your bike from Pega Vine to this. And so that does get some traffic.
And the bike trail goes all the way to Beaver.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it goes all the way down the parkway, all the way to Beaver Island.
Same, but, home, I'm gonna come out of my house.
To me, the majority of the traffic would be coming from the north.
It would.
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah, I live south.
I think, I think.
Yes.
To Norm's point, I think, I think you need both. Um, you know, there's a lot of traffic that turns off of the, off of the, uh, roundabout onto Staley right there. And the shortest distance from that corner to, uh, the new store is gonna be across that, um, open area. They're not gonna walk down to that entrance. They're gonna cut that corner. I think you need sidewalk from that corner over to the driveway.
That was my feeling, Dave.
Of both, uh, both of those. There's.
Dave, can you see, can you see this, Dave?
I can see that, yeah.
So you're saying this way and come and connect here? And then they come in?
Leave, leave the entrance.
Both?
Yes. Uh, well, one, right from the corner of Staley and the roundabout, go, go due east to the driveway. Because that's where people are gonna walk. Otherwise, they'll walk in the street.
It's my feeling too.
Okay, I just don't like, I don't like dumping, I don't like dumping foot traffic into that, walk that entrance. Well. I think if you're gonna do that, I think you should bring the sidewalk to here and then have another entrance coming in here, because this is non-parking over here. So if you had people walking in this way, but either way, this entrance to the store is over here.
You're saying to come here, cross their opening.
Right, and then come in.
Come in.
That would, that would be okay too.
Why dump foot traffic in a driveway?
And still this one too?
Absolutely.
Yeah, both of them.
Okay.
Let me, let me just say that, uh, as we, as we look at, look at this, this is probably one of the most important, uh, projects we've looked at as a planning board. Only because it's the front door of Grand Island. Every resident and every visitor at some point is gonna drive right by this. So I think, Dave, to your point, uh, this, this needs to be a four-sided view. And unfortunately, we didn't have renderings in our package. Uh, but I think some of the points you've just made, Dave, and the rest of you have made, Amy, I think are, are pertinent. But I also think that we need some really, um, significant landscaping in that triangular area in the, uh, in the northwest corner of the whole property. The.
Here, Dave?
Yeah.
The landscaping stops, uh, right at that detention pond, and I think it needs to be filled in. And, uh, you know, some, you know, Bergman has some really terrific landscape architects. I think they could come up with some, some great ideas for filling that in, maybe some water features, maybe some rocks, maybe, and, and a Grand Island sign in that particular area. This is the front door of Grand Island, and I think showing some really, uh, significant and, and, and visually, uh, attractive landscaping in that area. As well as a four-sided building, I think are gonna be very, very important.
Agreed.
Yep.
Is that code required landscaping though? I mean, for somebody to have a site and, and landscape their entire parcel? I mean, that's potential, uh, who knows, future development down the road. So you now put landscaping in there. I mean, we've adequately landscaped around the building.
Well, it, your, your property could be part of the incentive zoning that you're offering the town.
I think the foot traffic is important though, because the majority of our foot traffic comes from the bus, Burger King, all that there. So they're coming from the north to the south. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna walk through Tim Hortons or Wendy's. And then they're gonna start crossing out of, they're not gonna go all, all the way out to the Boulevard and back around. They're gonna come out the driveway, Tim Hortons, and they're gonna be crossing right there to find the shortest route into Aldi's. So I don't know exactly what the solution is, but there is gonna be foot traffic that's gonna keep going in there. That is where.
Well, there's a, is there a sidewalk running along Staley Road?
Yes, there is, up to where the houses.
Okay, so, all right, so rather than having it, rather than having it on both sides, why can't the cross, oh, oh.
The sidewalks only go to Tim Hortons.
End of their, end of their, right.
Ends right there, right before the houses.
We probably don't want a mid-block crossing.
No, you, no, no.
Yeah, it's just a matter of figuring what that solution is, but that is.
Well, you gotta exist, you gotta exist. That cross there.
At the roundabout.
Right, and that cross is, you know, not that safe to begin with.
Right.
But it's there.
So they're gonna go right.
Yep, and, and I'm gonna push back to one thing you said and, and see if I'm correct. You said you were gonna knock down the gas station, but you were gonna leave the rubble there? What, what do you mean?
Well, just like the, the asphalt and, and concrete was gonna be, you know, just basically pulverized in place, not on top, so I'd see it at this time. That was the intention.
Hmm.
So the building and everything would be removed.
Gonna look good.
And the concrete pad and stuff.
Crap, it'll look like.
Yeah.
Crescent town.
And, and that is what, for your reasoning for that?
Um, well, so the main reason would be is because, you know, once you turn that all back into pervious soil, topsoil and seed and stuff, you start to get into regulations for D C for stormwater requirements. So if, if it's left to be a certain material and, and then say some future development ever went there in the future, they would have not a stringent stormwater requirement for that particular parcel. I think that would be one of the most, um, probably.
Bob, how does that fall into engineering?
Well, I understand what he's saying.
Hmm.
It comes to the question of beauties on the island holder, what do we want the site to look?
I know, like, I mean, on Whitehaven and, or, I'm seeing, Whitehaven and Grand Island Boulevard. The gas station's landscaped all the way around, grass, bushes, and now we're gonna have, uh, rubble.
But that's.
Whitehaven, Whitehaven and Grand Island Boulevard, it's rubble, it's just exactly what they wanna leave.
No, no, White, no, Whitehaven.
Yeah, where the Getty Station used to be. Guys lumber bought it, knocked down the gas station, or the Getty knocked down the gas station.
I'm, I'm talking about Noco. Yeah, that hasn't been developed yet. I'm talking about Noco, Noco, how it's landscaped.
Oh, well, your kids, yeah, yeah.
Key bag, all, both, both sides, both.
Yeah.
The Boulevard and Whitehaven, both pieces, because that's kind of the center of the island.
And as Dave said, I mean, this is gonna be the first thing you see when you come down the Boulevard there. You don't wanna see just broken up concrete laying on the ground there.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And then if you were to put another building out there, how is that gonna even work with footage? Aren't, isn't your, by code, this building too big now?
Well.
For the code? Am I correct?
Correct.
So you're already have, proposing a building that's too large for the existing code. How would you add another building to?
We're not proposing anything, but. Who knows what happens in the future.
They don't, they don't add together like that.
I'm sorry?
They don't add together like that.
What do you mean?
So each building is taken on its own, starts for footage.
Okay. So we can have two different.
Yes, you have.
Building applications on one parcel?
A bunch of different stores. And each one would be able to go up to that square footage, allow square footage.
Oh, okay, so it's not, so the site's not maxed out at his square footage. Okay, okay.
What, one thing I noticed on your demolition plan is that you're leaving the driveway off of Grand Island Boulevard into where the old gas station is.
That's correct.
Why?
Uh, it's because it's within D O T driveway. And that's a, an existing curb cut. To not be removed. So that's a D O T property. That's not, that's not Aldi's property to, to deal with.
So it's outside of the line.
That is correct. That entire, this entire swath is all New York State D O T, the dark, so this is the piece you're talking about.
That's gonna look awful.
But it's within the D O T right of way and it's an existing curb cut through there.
I was wondering why you didn't have one of your entrances using that existing?
Um, I don't think the D O T would permit it, uh, allowance for this particular development. Wouldn't that function correctly anyway?
So if I'm coming there to shop, which way am I going in? What's gonna be the main?
The main entrance would be out Stony Point, you know, we would presume.
Stony, yeah. And the exit, the main exit would be Stony Point as well?
Except for people coming home from work are gonna go through the roundabout and enter into Staley.
Right, you're definitely gonna have a lot of people that are gonna enter here, probably enter and exit over there as well.
Right. So when you're leaving.
Depending on what time of day it is, if it's nighttime, your headlights are on or it's gonna be at all the houses across the street.
What kind of operating?
Eight to nine, nine is.
Yeah, which is about, so that's reasonable then.
Right, so there's not.
What is this, what is this parcel currently zone? It's commercial, isn't it?
Yeah.
Southern business.
Yeah.
So how about your sign? Is that gonna, gonna fall into the existing code for signs?
No, the sign does exceed the existing square footage, so it's another. That varies from the town code.
Yeah, okay, so.
That's all. Did you get the, did you get the cover though?
With that?
No, there was a cover letter that's.
That's right. This one that we just acted on?
No, 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 it was actually, it was a cover letter with their.
Probably already.
Okay.
You said where that driveway is, is property of who?
D C. D O T.
D O T?
Yeah.
Are they gonna allow you to put a dri- or a sidewalk across there?
Well, we're gonna have to, we have to submit an application for highway work permit.
So if you can put a sidewalk across there, why can't you get rid of that old driveway?
Yeah.
Someday.
Who may?
Well, they actually closed up during the construction of the roundabout, they closed off and eliminated drives. I think that was something that was kind of a lost leader from the past.
Yeah.
The old, the old entrances into the site.
Well, that's just another ice.
I just for, I was gonna say, for, for clarity, we did circulate this out under the coordinator review. As an interested agency, D O T got this, both the Niagara residency and the main office. Both got this plan set in order of a heads up with the project coming in.
Both got this plan set in order of a heads up with the project coming in. So. I mean, it's it obviously is going to open the door with the comments. We're, you know, we're expecting to hear from them. I don't know what they will say.
I I would at least approach DOT with uh with as Norm suggested, uh taking that driveway out. It's just, it's gonna be an ice or it's gonna work. This is our front door to Grand Island.
Well, I think with that new building there, it's gonna be confusing. They have people that already tried to go up the bridge the wrong way. Now, when they're getting off there, they're pulling them there thinking they're gonna go to Aldi's. That's what we're trying to, you know.
Oh, you mean coming into that driveway?
Yeah, coming, getting off the true way and going, oh, there you go, and pulling in over there.
Right.
How many cars do we have going the wrong direction already? I'm gonna pulling into an extra driveway that you, if you don't know. That would be my concern.
Yeah.
Before the roundabout, we had a lot of people going the wrong.
Yeah.
Make it a safety issue with DOT. That's, I love it.
Do on DOT, but yeah, it's need to be looked at.
Yeah.
Uh, next thing I'd like to ask Casey, how are we doing on parking here? I got a paper from the traffic safety board saying. They don't feel there's enough uh handicapped.
Nearly enough stops because I'm not. There.
Yeah, so a hundred and thirteen spaces are required by code. We park a hundred and eight on the site. But we show um eleven additional features, so it's a hundred and twenty one spaces that have the potential to be parked on here.
So where's the bank parking?
The bank, uh, it's a little hard to see. I just can't really focus. There's a little league, you're probably pretty guys to see that. It's like blind hitting at the folks from the fence, and we have the spaces along the end of the parking there, so it's kind of a mirror.
What, what? What drawing is that?
Five. C one ten, Dave.
Let's see one hundred.
One hundred.
It's on one ten also, yeah.
And they're on, it should show.
So your handicaps are where, sir?
Uh, right along the front, the ADA accessible.
So there's.
The meter bar, right?
There's four there. Why do they say? Indicates four there for one parking space from the building must be changed to reserve parking space.
They think there's three and it looks like four.
There's four handicaps, but then you've got three other spots on the west side, the northwest side.
Those are curbside pickup spaces.
So Casey, back to you. We're good with the four handicaps? Okay.
The only, the only comment I'll make is, I mean, I know line work wise, okay, the the bank parking is slightly going into the bio retention. And so you're gonna do this, shift your, you know, if if this came, hey, we need this. I don't think you wanna be moving your bio retention and, you know, like you said, we have to look at how the store lays out. So. This looks like your pot, your bio retention facility's gotta shift. From a constructability that the car parking spaces aren't into this whole of the bio retention facility.
Well, he just needs to shift this.
Yeah, check your pond.
Guys, you guys have data uh as far as your parking required needed for? Buildings, I mean, I'm sure you've got them everywhere and you don't exactly tell how many people are in your store and.
Tell them that's small.
What's that?
Just eighty five.
Eighty five, yeah. The number according.
Yeah, I mean, we're, this is, this is parking more than we ever park in any other, all these study already, so.
Yeah.
Typically about eighty five to ninety spaces on a store where we normally would show.
I got a.
Well, the bank, I mean, the banking is a way to not have to obviously construct the infrastructure, you know, and and that's a plus. The bottom, you know, and and I'll and I'll say this in a way that's not, but you know, let's. Say Aldi doesn't survive. I, you know, I won't be wanting to, don't take that as any statement, but you now have a building of X size. It has an allowable use that can generate off of our parking schedule, things that somebody besides an Aldi. Could be here someday. So that's what, you know, at least the space is reserved on the lot. We're not saying construct and build it at this time. But make sure we have the room of something that meets our code should the should the use change or the octave change. And I think that's our antenna banking. We don't want you to go through the cost of building the thing, but obviously, do we have the space on the site to make it work?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the space is there. The bio retention is a very shallow base and it's, you know, a foot or less, and even the edge of it isn't there. That's, that's fine. We can. We can shift that little line two feet. It's not.
Norm, go ahead.
Um, and the driveway coming in from Staley. You've got around the curve there, you've got four bollards, and I take it that to prevent people from parking on the grass?
Uh, no, that is to prevent people from, if I remember correctly, I believe it's the transformer over there. I think it's the utility.
You see what I'm talking about, right?
Oh, we haven't, we also have the F D C there over there, so it's a fire department connection. So it's more to protect that from being damaged by snowplows, things like that.
Okay, um, here's a suggestion. I mean, along the front of the store, where you have all your glass windows. Many stores now are putting bollards in front of the glass windows to prevent people from driving through the windows. It's happened here on the island already. I would suggest putting bollards along the front there to prevent that, and that's in our design standards too.
I believe that is in our designs.
That's, that's a, well, there is a pretty good series of bollards along, uh, I believe it is all along those those areas.
It doesn't show on your site plan.
There's, so our, our ADA accessible part, it it does show on the site plan. I know they're a little bit hard to see. But there's bollards all along. We have a listed bollard C structural plans for details. A little hard to see, but they're in frequency along the back of the.
Ah, okay, thank you for pointing that out.
And our ADA signage is also uh signs and bollards, so you know, you have those six spaces also protected. But there are, there are bollards along that storefront.
Another question, I'm sure John's gonna get me on this too. When we come in the building, how are you treating your asphalt from the grass? Are you curbing that with like a concrete curb?
This is not curved. It's um all sheet drainage. So that it can, you know, be D C compliant. It has to basically go through a filter strip and then into the bio retention.
Of the same nature.
Same thing. It's just sheet drainage off from the edge. It is not protected by.
So I could come in and go cutting across the grass.
Sure could. If you can't get in within twenty, thirty five feet of pavement.
Which is.
I suppose.
Now, how did the design standard shake out with that in the end, John?
Um.
Didn't we add that?
It's not code, but it was a recommendation.
But it was in the design standards.
Because it's a consistent problem.
What's, what's happened on other, even though they have the twenty foot, they drive over the mud and then you've got mud all through your.
People are attracted to mud.
And then you end up, you know, with big ruts in here. So in the design standards, it is stated that that be curbed, your parking lot be curbed.
Give me silence there. Actually, can you grab a silence? No. Okay.
I mean, could it be accomplished with some type of?
That, that was my point.
Landscaping or something if you, I understand your bio, you know, your sheet drainage and that, could we? Is that something that? I I'm just saying, if you go down the Boulevard now.
Drive over the curbs?
Well, it's the corners, right? So we have a real problem along all of our business district that. Any of our, we've noticed and we just redid our design standards that any of any of these that don't have any kind of curving on them. Are destroyed within two years. So a lot of the newer places have been trying to put. Curbing or some kind of element in the corners to define those corners to make it, you know, define exit and entrance where you're not. Just destroying the, with a gas station that did a whole front of the thing and it lasted one season with, it was just destroyed.
Fifty foot curb cut.
Yeah, and it was destroyed. So that was one of the reasons why, you know, we've been discussing that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, you can look at, so you're talking about just the radius.
Just to define, yeah, that that's, you know.
Yeah, we, I mean, once, once I'm in here, it'd be pretty hard for me to go over there. Just when they come in, they, they cut it quick and.
If anything, it may solve itself some problems in the long run.
Ended up with all these ruts and they never get repaired and it just looks terrible. And then you've got mud all through your blacktop. The other thing was uh. We can work with that. What about the island? Should that be, we make a recommendation to waive the islands here?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
There's, yeah. There's not big enough. In there and then trucks.
They're in the design and performance standards to have an island in the middle, so we'll just put that.
Yeah, we, we talked, we talked to P about that. I mean, for turning and stuff, you, you know, especially trucks, you end up making ridiculously wide driveways.
Uh, plus it might be a problem with the curb cuts, whatever you gotta go through. Now, Norm, when you were talking about out there. This curb cut, and if he leaves that rubble there. What would stop me from driving in there parking?
Yeah.
Or the, or the, or the, or the guy that has the car lot putting cars over there.
Well, that old blacktop drive, that's why I think that should come out. And also, I think all the rubble should come out too. That's my opinion. I mean, it would be better just to have green space than to look at. Broken up concrete laying there.
Yeah, yeah. They can do that. Yeah, so we'll, that, we're, as you said, we'll look at just removing the concrete and that as well up there, tops on it to that. Better. I don't know, I can't speak to the entrance drive yet.
Well, the curb cut would have to stay. That's not outside your property.
Right.
So I'm, I don't know exactly where it is on your plan. It's right here.
No, Dave, I'm talking about the one over off of.
You're talking, he's talking about this.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
He's talking about this one as well. Yeah, I'm talking about the one by.
Alpha Staley, yeah.
There was another one there, yeah.
There's one here too?
Yes.
Well, this is a drive for me, I mean.
Yeah, that was.
But it's cut there, you can drive in there. So that's what I'm saying. Now that that corner's lit up and you're coming down the bridge and going, oh, there's a lot of these there, you pull in there and you don't know. You could pull right in there cuz it would look like there won't even be a building just to.
So this was grass, so this way.
Something, right?
Coming in, I'm talking about the one where the, the hard guy parks all the cars.
It's just, you know, it's.
Oh, oh. And there is a ditch, there is a ditch along there, isn't there?
There is.
Yeah, on the Boulevard side, yeah.
On Staley Road.
On Staley. Okay, can.
On Staley Road, that's all.
Something to look at.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
And I'm gonna try to make a motion here.
From the corner to the.
Well, can you take your, your bank parking out there and just continue along here? And show this on your bank parking, just like it is here?
Yeah, we probably do.
Just so you don't get into redesigning this pond and everything?
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Chances are good you won't need it, but the Bob's point, you know, somewhere a a long time down the road.
We only need five spaces so we can, I think we can, I think we can.
Yeah, if he could maybe just work them in here, that way your pond can kind of stay sure. Where it is, that might just be.
So I heard of.
Yeah. The question that the curb cut that's on Staley there.
Yeah.
Isn't that gonna be remain? That's gonna be the new entrance?
No.
It's not?
No.
The new entrance is further to the east?
Correct.
Correct.
It is, it is between, it is basically the, so you've got. You've got Tim Horton's entrance. You have a, the the first house has a U shaped driveway.
I'm looking at it.
Uh, the first driveway is to his garage. The second one is to the house, so to speak.
Yes.
They are across from basically that driveway that have the, how, no. The, they could pick it up on the topo. You can see the driveways on.
Curb cut here.
Yeah, Tim Horton. Yeah, the curb cut. Yep, exactly. This has the curb cuts across from Tim Horton's that I know.
Mm hmm. And here's the old.
So we're a little limited on.
That's my, you know.
Yeah.
Due to the uh existing.
Wide open.
That one highway there? Uh, Staley. Correct. Yeah. So it's.
Yeah, I think somebody has to do something there if that's the case.
Cohesive with the parking and stuff, to not have a road that comes way out. It's one of those things where in order to avoid the utility falls down through here. You know, we were shipping buildings, you know, just trying to make it.
You're just gonna have to avoid that guy across.
Actually, it's literally, so this, this one actually, if you look, so if you go to C one thirty. Alright, so you can see the iapping, that's their sewer crossing cuz the the utility work is being done. Right next to that is the Tim Horton's drive. You can see a little. Topo work, that's the Tim Horton's driveway. The first driveway is his garage. The second driveway is the house, and then you've got a loop at the next house also. So they're kind of lined up with the house.
Okay, I'm gonna start a motion.
I'd like to just, before you do that, Dave, there's two other things. I didn't see. Details of the screening for the dumpster. Now, maybe they're on the elevation, but I think it's, it needs to have more than a a chain link fence and so on around it.
More than chain link.
And I, and I think also that whole truck loading dock needs to be screened. Um, once again, from the uh uh neighbors across Stony Point there, looking at that. Um, I think that needs to be screened as well as the dumpster.
So yeah, and we have a bunch of plantings.
There it is. There's a fence that goes there currently.
Yep.
And then there's landscaping that comes all the way from the driveway all the way down, and then there's additional plantings there.
Firmed a little.
I didn't see any, I don't see any fence there.
It's, it's on, it's on the elevation that we're looking at.
You don't, you don't.
And you can see it on the site plan as well, cuz you can see the enclosure and then you can see the fence thing you're around.
Are you just doing standard fencing for the dumpster enclosure?
I'm not. Do you know the material of the fencing? I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Yeah, as long as it's not like just.
It's not cheap.
Yeah.
It's not cheap.
Thank you.
Always with those flats, with the.
Norm, do you ever restore a curb cut that's not needed any longer?
They've required them to be removed.
Reinstall, I'm talking about. We're gonna have two curb cuts here, which are not gonna be used.
I'm saying they have required them to be eliminated.
Right, so, so one.
They have required them to be eliminated, eliminated and not being used.
It's a DOT.
Eliminate the curb cut, meaning put them back in. It's just, yeah, that's.
So one thing you wanna be careful of uh as a property owner or anything, when you, when you have a curb cut that exists, is removing that curb cut. Because you guys already mentioned, say this property changes hands. Down the road and it's not at all the, you now have a fight on your hands with DOT to obtain a curb cut where there isn't one. Um, whereas there's one that exists, it's a lot easier battle to provide an entrance drive to a future developer. A different pattern, traffic pattern, things like that that might have to be. So. So it is, it's a slippery slope when it comes to removing a curb cut in in general.
Am I wrong, am I wrong to say that that's really not? DOT's not our thing? Like if DOT says they they stay, they stay. If they say they remove them. We're site planned, we're in, we're property lined in, not, we're not outside. Am I, am I wrong to say that? That that's between them and DOT?
To be honest, I don't know, Dave.
I, I don't know.
Well, we don't have any jurisdiction over the DOT.
DOT.
I think it's a concern and a question we can bring up, but yeah, it probably goes down.
Well, I mean, we, it's already, these plans have been submitted to.
Right. I'm just saying beyond, above and beyond this, we should look into that.
Yeah, I mean, if they're going to DOT to put a sidewalk across their property. And possibly remove the old driveway. I mean, it's. Something to talk about. Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna.
I'm not.
I'm gonna try. Okay, I'm gonna make the motion to approve. And here's, I'm gonna list my stuff and then we'll try to go back through it, that, you know, if we get a second. Okay?
Thanks.
We're looking for them to do sidewalks on Staley to enter their property. Down Staley and into their property.
Yes.
We're looking for the four sides to match.
Or have some variation.
The four sides of the elevation of the building. The building size and the sign, we're gonna refer that to the town board for their approval. The rubble where the old gas station will be removed and be graded seed. The banked parking.
Wait one minute.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Will be removed. And grassed and seed.
Yeah, graded seed.
Okay.
Bank parking. Is either to move the pond or to drop the bank parking. Someplace to possibly this area.
The entranceway.
To, to waive the, to ask the town board to waive the islands at the entrances?
They recommend.
Recommend? Okay, that's what I've got.
Got one more item. The entrances on the radiuses of the entrances to have some mechanism there to keep.
Fine. We'll add that to my motion, please, Arlene.
You talking about on both sides, Norm, or just? No, it would have to be, I mean.
Here, here, there. Here, something, plantings, bushes.
Just curbing like we talked, curbing. And the curbing can just come and end here. It doesn't have to go all the way down.
True, you could curb the radiuses.
Just curb that radius.
The radius.
Well, he doesn't wanna curb because of the drainage.
No, I, I, I think we can look at just, just the radiuses might be okay.
Yeah, define.
Let's say curbing, curbing the radiuses of the entrance.
Yeah, landscaping.
Yeah, the boulder worked great too.
Yeah, and something.
They do till they go, right?
Okay, so. Does anyone wanna add to my motion? Anything, Dave? Anything, Dave? I missed?
Yeah, yes, I, I, I really think that other than just uh grass, I think we really need to see that northwest triangular corner. Um, landscaped and and a really uh beautiful uh landscaped corner there, cuz it is the entrance to the town. And uh.
You wanna add that to my motion, Dave?
I, I would, but I really think we should table this. Uh, I would prefer, there's just so many issues here and this is just so important. That we see this again before we approve it. I think all your points, Dave, are perfect and well taken. But I think we should table this and see it again.
Okay, let me, let me just add that to my motion, Arlene, to. Have a decorative landscape and done um.
Yes.
Should be.
That, that front corner. Okay. Anyone wanna second my motion?
Some of us.
Second by Brad. Any further discussion? No one? Alright, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Three. Jen, your voter?
I know. Well, the thing is, I think it would be I I the argument of seeing again, so. I'm gonna say no.
Want to table it?
Table I'd like to.
No, 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 that's not the motion. That's not the motion. It's either yes or no on my motion.
I say no.
No by Dave.
No.
No from Norm.
I say yeah. That doesn't require you to table.
Okay. Jen, where are you? Yes or no? On my motion.
No pressure.
Yeah.
Pressure, Jen. I got my pen here like my shotgun. It's my motion, so it's either a yes or no on my motion. Then we could go to a different motion if need be.
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, so it was yes, yes, yes. Tim was a yes. That's four. Two, no, Dave. Norm, you were a no?
Yes.
A no, no. It passed. Four to three.
Okay.
Okay, guys.
Girl's up. Sorry to beat you up.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda. Is communications number one received and filed. Anything on the comp plan, Jen? I I can't make. Good.
We're just doing our review.
Okay. Unfinished business. Long Bob, long road still moving.
Through the has been given comments on the. S D E I S to remain on your table for future consideration.
Okay, so we'll leave number one as unfinished business. Uh, are you? Who are you folks here with? Okay, I'm on my next one is uh Whitehaven Road accessory structure. Is that you guys?
Yes, it is.
You're not. No, you're Bedell Road.
My name is Carl Frankbridge. I'm the attorney for clinical. What we uh. Discovered that the property was merged for tax purposes, but it was not legally merged. Um, so what we had to do was um retool the plans and the site plan. Uh, for the facility, the facility, and I think Joe can speak to this.
It will be.
Yes, thank you.
It will now be a primary um facility now for Marty on that on the Larry one. So we have to go back. It cannot be a normal pole barn. It needs to be an actual commercial space that meets all the towns. Requirements, so it's gonna take a little bit more time with Troutman Engineering Firm to go through and.
This is for Whitehaven Road.
Whitehaven, yes, sir.
Okay, so we're just gonna table that.
We're tabling that. Yeah, uh, we're in contact with uh Troutman and keeping Ron updated as we get more stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so we're just leaving Whitehaven on as unfinished business.
Correct.
Correct.
Good with that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, now we're moving on to number three. Two, two, three, four, Bedell Road.
Correct.
Right. Okay, so what's happening with Bedell Road?
Well, we submitted site plans. We've submitted POs. We've submitted um utility plans um. Landscaping plans.
You hit it off for most part.
Um, we also I do have a letter that I would like to submit before we have to send a copy. Pass these around. For the other side. That's what it's like when I pass it around and now I go to. Uh, it's from the uh the neighbor directly. A buddy uh where the development will be just so. Um, you know, we have a uh the cordial relationship and a um. Captain's the contractor as well, who is aware of what we're living next to. Um, we have submitted everything we've worked uh sort of hand in glove with the um uh zoning board. I'm sorry, rather, the uh uh. The uh the town engineers and the uh 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 zoning department, so that we should have everything exactly as the town wants it. I don't think there's a lot left. Um, we would like to withdraw the outdoor storage um. Aspect on the application. There will be no.
There will be no outdoor storage.
No outdoor storage.
Next to building is built. Everything that goes outside at that point will be inside. And my wife and I are primary owners of Bella Factory Solutions LLC. Um, we do our kind of municipality work from city of Buffalo. Town, town, and one of New York State DOT that year economy work. And we're primarily gonna use our office space for engineering purposes. Uh, we have grown, you know, substantially in the last year. And uh we do need auxiliary building, so more of our expensive permitting tools could be stored inside of a building, not outside to be an ISO to the community in any way. Uh, we do know that we've grown leaps and bounds in the last year, so we're also gonna be purchasing a property in the town, town, and one in like a um. Like a um. Like an M one type community, so that our larger stuff will be stored not here in Grand Island uh due to the fact that. We do understand and, you know, we love Grand Island. My wife and I are both residents here. We're both brand new business owners and. You know, we really want to be a safe, honest community and move forward here, you know?
I appreciate that, but on our. Thing, this is a site plan application for accessory structure and outdoor storage, so now that's all removed?
This the other should not have been outdoor storage on that.
That was an original application.
Yes.
We're withdrawing that aspect of the application.
Original application.
Yes.
They submitted a new site plan.
Yeah.
That same original application that removes the outdoor store.
Correct.
What about accessory structure? Where is that?
There's a new building.
Yes. And it's on there, there's a site plan.
Side of it, that's a new building.
I have a larger site plan if you guys want to look at it.
What happened with the ZBA? They denied you for conflict of zoning code.
We have to apply for a variance because the building is too large for the curtilage.
Yeah, so they're going.
So you're you're going up in front of the ZBA.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't been denied at all yet. There hasn't been anything in front of them to be denied till this point. There was nothing ever applied. So I do not know where that came from.
So there's denial that's by us.
Yeah.
That's how they get to.
Yeah, that's how we get.
Okay, okay.
So the site.
That's our appeal.
Yep, got you. So. Forget no, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
What what we're doing is uh we will that we have applied for the uh the variance. We'll go in front of the board. The variance is because of the height. Uh, restriction and you as you'll see, the building is uh too close to the curtilage for how tall the building. And a lot of that has to do with the the shape of a lot.
So Casey, does this fall under accessory buildings like the height? You've got to be the same.
Right.
Off the side lot line is the height of the building. I found it right and off the back line of standard. Or the side. Okay, still then.
We were told from Ron that um. It could be approved on the basis of. That being approved, like you, every if we can get through tonight. And if we have to have a table to the next meeting, so you know finalize, we could do that, but he said you guys could approve it. With the the application of that approval from the zoning.
Upon the zoning.
Yes.
Approval.
As long as we met all the requirements for you guys to be satisfied with the plans tonight.
Okay, Casey, back to you. Is everything up to snuff there? Wasn't there some issues?
No, I mean, you wrote the outdoor storage. That was the one issue we had.
Okay.
It's a variance for where he's locating his building. Other than that. Everything. We'd zone.
Casey, did we ever get a checklist on this?
Yes.
We did?
Initially, yeah.
So all the trucks and everything that are.
Well, the trucks are New York State.
It's not very.
Vehicles. I mean, it's like no different than any other property on on the boulevard where. There's outdoor storage and there's people. Truck is parked in front of their business. I mean, there won't be heavy equipment and stuff along those lines, but. And then that's a New York State registered vehicle, which we're not asking for condoms and dump trucks, all that stuff. It's our normal everyday pickup truck stuff that the office staff with every week drive. Uh, maybe a small pool truck here and there, but nothing like huge excavators and this is stuff like that. Yes, that's true.
And then all of that stuff is going in here?
Doug, that's why we're purchasing another property. We're working right now with a realtor to find out a piece of property for a lay down yard. I'm also working with George Panel. Um, close friends and uh. He said if we need any accessory and storage there, they'll help us out.
So what are we using this for?
This will be for our primary hand tools and stuff like that. They're more expensive surveying equipment and stuff like that that. I don't trust to be out somewhere. A GPS surveying equipment that we run is two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So this is still gonna end up like a contractor's yard.
And.
Well, it'll be ev- everything. Everything will be inside. There will be nothing stored outside. So what will be in there is sensitive equipment and expensive. Nothing, no heavy equipment. There'll be nothing that um. Uh, that that would not be covered with a fence, you know, the the fence that in and out. There'll be nothing in there that would that would, you know. Require uh a heavy truck to pull.
Like lifts.
Can I ask you then if if that's what you're gonna be storing in there? Why does it have to be so tall?
Because our F five fifties and stuff like that are, you know, nine, ten feet tall by the time you pull with the racks and stuff like that. Even a normal sized box truck needs a twelve foot opening to enter the facility to go out like C I R or whatever. There they mean they have box trucks at their facility that they need larger doors that gets their, you know, lighting.
Yeah, you need clearance and then for the for the roofs.
That's a good answer. Okay.
So then all the box trucks and pickup trucks, et cetera.
I don't, I mean.
Will be parked outside.
How big is this building?
It is thirty by forty. No.
That big. It's a one box truck. That's what mine is.
Right.
I get one box truck in there.
So to clarify, are there two variances for side yard and height?
Just just side yard. The height is okay as long as the variance is approved for, am I speaking right, Casey? As long as it's approved for the side distance. And it's not that we're talking like we have distance. I mean, we have on one point of the building, if you look on the site plan. We have nineteen feet on one side of the property. It's just a very odd shaped property. It lies towards the back. Um, it's not like a three foot on towards the property. We have ten foot buffer. I mean, between. The building and the law. It's not like I'm in approaching on our neighbor's property by significant amount of footage.
Casey, what's the height? What's the code for the height?
It.
Eighteen feet?
Terms of accessory structure, those only apply to our one.
Right.
Lots. So there isn't. Like restricted for just the accessory structure. You're just gonna regular height. Or.
It's the height?
Yeah.
I got that by half.
So you're eighteen feet to here?
Uh, yes, and then whatever the I think it specs up. I think it comes out. I think we did the math, like twenty three or twenty four feet.
What's the pitch on the roof?
Um, it's listed in the details.
Twelve on four.
Yeah, it's twelve on.
Four to four twelve.
Yep.
And then. What are these colors gonna be?
So um we so the brick is gonna match the existing color of the building that it is now. We're gonna try to. Work with uh throughway builders and find a rustic brick that kind of matches the building and put a facade, because that's the side that will be facing. Um, Whitehaven, but we do propose a stockade fence down that side, but just in case.
Hold on. Not Whitehaven, Grand Island Boulevard.
Red eye, but yes, yes, Grand Island Boulevard, sir. And so this will be exposed to the boulevard and this is exposed to uh. Uh, Bedell, but this side technically really won't be seen, but just in case we don't get to the fence right away, you know, we'd like to, you know. Make it.
But this is the back?
That is the back, yeah. And that's up against woods. There's nothing there. And then through the woods is the um veterinarian clinic.
What's what's the zone here, Casey? So then that would be design and performance standards. Correct?
Um, I.
You know what this building is, right?
Wasn't that on?
This was a right, this was a doctor's office. Yep. So when they did the new map for the Grand Island Boulevard, they incorporated that because that was an existing commercial structure.
Okay, so he's gonna use the doctor's office as office.
That's their office.
Yeah.
And then he's gonna park. The expensive equipment in here and they're gonna come here and pick up. So there's not gonna be any wire mesh and all that.
Yeah, anything I think there is, forms and stuff will be stored inside.
Inside.
Yes, yeah. Have them all inside. And also we proposed the fence around the whole property that Dr. Defense would show in the site plan.
And then what colors are these?
Uh, we were gonna talk with the 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 board uh with Rhonda and whatever you guys recommended for the colors, we would do whatever. It took to make you guys satisfied with it.
And are you steel roof?
I would like to do. I would like to like to do a architectural shingle to match the actual uh structure that's there now, so it doesn't look out of place.
But it's it's showing as a metal roof.
We could sit with the architect and we could change whatever on that aspect. I want to make it aesthetically pleasing to. To you guys.
So what are we doing for doors? Are you doing like a black door or what?
As far as I know, they they speced out just a white door with the the.
With the lights?
With the lights or with the windows, but I mean, I mean, that's cosmetic. I mean, if they needed to be painted, they could be painted, you know?
You can order the doors.
I'm made of a million bucks, but.
So now, Casey, would this have to go in front of the architectural review board?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it would.
And that's why we work hand in hand with Rhonda to try to accommodate. Everything that the architectural board was gonna guess for.
What's on the gable of the building? What's this?
This is the actual structure of the building now.
Yeah, what is that?
That's a architectural shingle. Now.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we fulfill the landscaping plan to ten percent of what the ground uh requires. We have all the plantings in there. Um, this is our neighbor that supplied the letter, so we're gonna give them some privacy. Uh, we're gonna put all brand new curb in the parking lot. Um, there's already existing drainage that's in here that's all tied out to. Bedell, so there's nothing that we really have to mess with out as far as drainage.
Is the dumpster green?
It will be, yep, and it shows the fence detail.
Okay. And do you do they require a handicaps? Space here?
We have it right here, sir. We have one right here with the auxiliary.
I see it.
And then we have we did the math and there's a proper amount of parking spots for the amount of people that need to be inside the building.
Casey, are you good on the parking?
Yes.
Okay.
About lighting in the building. Um, there's already existing lighting on the property. Um, I'd be willing to work with whatever we have to. I. Maybe even I can even have the architect maybe draw something like that. I don't want to draw much lighting to the building due to the neighbor. That would be, that's my biggest thing. I mean, I'm not there really in the dark, so. If, you know.
Yeah.
I prefer not to put anything on the exterior side of the building.
Isn't there pod lights on the building?
There is now, yeah, and it's enough. It shines the whole back. And.
Right on the existing building.
On existing building, correct, yeah.
The idea is to impact the neighbor as little as possible.
We want to have a light by the door, though, minimally.
Well, there is. There's gonna be angrous, negrous lights and.
Electric code would be you'd have to have a light outside the man door.
It's not shown.
For code.
So I mean, if we just add the dark sky like.
Right, that can just be a side.
Yeah, that's. You could just put all a dark sky light right there.
And I take all your notes into consideration and we can have the architect, I mean. Take care of whatever we need to at that point.
I think I saw gas. What about water? Are you considering water back?
There will be no water to this building whatsoever. There's no need for it.
So this is just storage, but it's.
Yeah, I'm gonna heat it just in case with the. Unfortunately, some of the products that we use for vinyl patching and stuff like that, I can't have it take moisture, so. And we do do some epoxy coatings at work, so the materials have to stay around sixty five degrees.
Bathroom or nothing in here.
No. Yeah, the the doctor's office has four bathrooms, so we're pretty much covered.
Yeah, well, you would have electric there.
Yes, there's. We are waiting for National on National Grid to get back with the architect on. If the building is sufficient that we could pull an auxiliary panel off or we have to run a new service, we're still in limbo. We do not know from National Grid what. We have to do at that point.
Well, that's gonna be an issue for you. If you have to pull a new servers, where is it gonna go?
A new service, uh Brad, if you pull the thing out, there's an existing pole with the transformers. We've already done the math. It's about whatever that does.
Oh, if you'd be able to bring it down here.
Yep, right down that side.
I wasn't sure if you were here.
Nope, nope, we could run right off that existing pole. There's three transformers, enough power to facilitate if we have to run a separate service.
Would you do underground or?
I'm gonna do underground everything. I don't want anything visible from the sky.
Should I make a motion again and we can? If we can motor through it? Okay, Arlene. I'm gonna make a motion.
Are you doing? Are you making the motion for that? I see you put a line there.
Oh, yeah.
For the brick to go all the way around.
I'm coming.
Okay. I was just wondering if that's the bad line.
Yeah, this this is not seen from anything. This is woods and the other side's woods, but if it is, what you need, it is what it is.
I'm gonna fix it right.
Oh, sick.
If I can read my own.
Okay, if the metal roofing will be subs- uh architectural shingles will be substituted for the metal roofing. to match the existing office building. The, the accessory structure will have dark sky lighting.
At the door, entrance door.
Oh, but just lighting, lighting where needed shall be dark side compliant.
Dark side compliant. Uh, there will be no bathroom or water to the accessory building. And our approval will be based on them beginning their CPA approval. And do we wanna add the back? Cuz it's supposed to be done on all four sides, cuz he says this is up against.
Could something change next door and.
It's, the property shows a fence all the way around too. But actually, the bottom of the brick is not visible to anybody.
It would be good, though, for you.
But it is what it is. Yeah, I'm not overly concerned with something like that.
Recommend, you guys discussed it, everybody said it, but the revised plan set basically said, if he said it here, but in your motion acknowledging that there is no outdoor storage.
Yes, sir, that was much.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna ask you to put the brick across the back. So it's done on all four sides.
Perfect, easy enough.
And then.
No outdoor store.
Bob, how did you say that again?
Well, I thought, the, the site does not, you know, allow.
Oh, yeah, no, that, that there's no outdoor storage outside of licensed vehicles, correct? Right.
A sign, what kind of signage were you gonna put out?
So there is an existing sign that must have been from the doctor's office from years ago, it's shown on the site plan, we.
So no, like lighting, do you think?
There is lighting on it already, it's, and it's.
Yeah, it was, it was the doctor's sign, then it was.
Yeah.
I remember the sign there, I didn't remember.
Yeah, we just reutilize that sign, it's too little.
Okay.
Hey, by like kind of clocking out, you can't even see it anymore.
I didn't go by there, but are the entrance ways curved?
I know, they are now, but they will be now.
You're gonna curb?
I'm curbing the whole parking lot, yeah.
Okay, he's gonna curb the parking lot.
It'll define all the entrances.
Yep.
Get it.
Okay, so does anyone wanna add anything?
Just a question, you said licensed vehicles, what about a boat on a trailer and they're both licensed?
I don't know about, so don't worry about that, I don't swim.
Part of them.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be licensed motor vehicles, so what do you wanna say, rather than trailers?
He does have trailers that he uses, so.
They're new, New York state registered vehicles.
You originally said no outdoor storage outside of licensed vehicles. Is that what you wanna say?
Change that, any?
I just don't want it to be a boat yard or something like that.
Like the construction management placed down by Long Road is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but he's out of, he's out of the district, though. The vehicles are gonna be only associated.
You're gonna have to do it with the business. Okay.
The vehicles, thank you. The vehicles, forgive me. The vehicles are gonna be the only those associated with the commercial activity.
Okay, we'll just add, we'll add that to the motion, that the licensed vehicles will only be associated to the business.
Not only those associated with the commercial activity.
Right.
Right.
So don't be buying a boat through the business.
I don't want a boat.
Okay, anyone else have anything else to add to this? Okay, that was my motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Tim, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye. Bye.
Thank you guys so much.
All the way around, thanks, folks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, take care. Okay, last on the agenda, folks, is the, back to the bed and breakfast again.
Our doctor, here we go. I'm gonna give you my license name, it's John.
And how do you spell your last name?
Okay, last time we had a lot of discussion about the amount of people and. And I think this year, did everybody read this?
They did.
I kinda think it got all hot, does anyone have any?
I, I, there's a couple of things I.
Go ahead, Brad, you're first.
Um.
And I'm not voting with you, just a soul.
Page three.
Page three, okay.
Owner operator each forest, whatever you wanna call it.
What, what number, yeah?
Yeah.
B four B?
Page three, section four B.
Okay.
Um. A permanent record in writing of all guests enacted such home, um, most of these places now have a digital online book they're going through. I think that would be suffice.
Wouldn't that be a permanent record?
Uh, well, I just, I just wanna, I wanna say or digital guestbook.
Wouldn't it be, permanent record be either hard copy paper or digital?
Take out in writing and just say permanent record.
Permanent record, okay, we're gonna move in.
I just, yeah, I got you. Hold on, the reason I.
Yeah, I got it.
Hold on, the reason I'm stating this is because I did receive a phone call and somebody who has one said that somebody from the town told him they had to have a book out on the desk with everybody's name and phone number, whoever stayed there. And, and she says, and she said, she doesn't think that's right, that she should have a book out there for everybody to look at.
So.
So that's why I wanted to.
Arlene, we're gonna try to keep this as we go, we're gonna, section four B, we're gonna remove permanent record, just the in writing.
Okay.
Permanent record stage, just the in writing comes out. Okay, Brad, next.
Uh, page four.
Page four.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
Why are we, as part of a special use permit or a law, telling these people how they should run their business?
Casey?
We don't tell McDonald's how to cook their hamburgers.
Oh.
Why are we telling them that they have to do all these other things? I think if they didn't, I think that that would.
Let's see. What happened?
Like we couldn't, couldn't have a law required people follow this. I think putting up their name on the front door was one of the things, I think some of the other things were too.
So some of these things are coming off, is what you're saying?
I think they have some.
So I would say seven and eight could should come off and.
Is everybody okay with that? Removing seven and eight?
And eleven.
Hold on, let's do seven and eight first. Seven, eight, everybody good? Okay, Arlene, we're removing seven.
I think there's a lot of language, I've looked in a lot of, oh.
I, I was just gonna say. Should we not require them to clean and sanitize between guests? I mean.
My argument to that is the, so legal's gonna look at what the other language is and what's already in our code and some of that's already there and it's in other language in our other in code, so keeping it or taking it out, I think we're gonna end up keeping some of it in there. Now, what exactly they're gonna say, how detailed and how we can get in it, but I think that's why it's there, cuz it was, some of that was already previously in there.
So.
I understand what you're saying.
So my, my, yeah, my, again, my question is, do we make restaurants? Do we have a required, is that a health department requirement?
Yeah.
Right? Well, does the bed and breakfast have health department requirements?
Yeah.
Sure. Or is it just strictly code enforcement?
It could be cross reference.
I mean, are you gonna be going there checking the soaps and the towels, Casey, like?
I mean, it's, it's there, yeah, somebody complained about it and we have it in our code.
I think it's the idea of distinguishing that it's a bed and breakfast, so there's these, these minimal things to distinguish that this code that we're, this is a bed and breakfast, this isn't um, vacation, whatever, or hotel, or what, like, there's some I just think it's kind of the language that goes along with, you know, and then when, when code enforcement goes in there or however we're gonna force this can go in and see it's properly set up for bed and breakfast and those are the bare minimums. I think that's the idea, that's my argument. We've not, down to the. Telling them?
I mean, down to the, we have to tell them how much toilet paper to have.
I'm wondering if.
It doesn't say that, Brad, doesn't.
Efficient supply of bath tissue.
Okay, hold on, Brad's against seven and eight, where are you, Jen? Leave it or take it out? Norm.
It could be.
In or out?
But.
Out.
Out.
I said out.
I would say, and, well, I don't know what the, the laws are, whether it's health department or, uh, I don't wanna have bed and breakfast on the island where people are going there and
Bed dogs.
Nothing's clean.
Hmm, okay, so leave it in.
I mean.
So my, my whole point is.
If it was a different business and it was, there was trash everywhere, the dumpster was turned over, we wouldn't allow that in the town.
Right.
But I don't.
I mean, there's.
Wouldn't enforce that.
Dave, where are you at, Dave, on seven or eight?
Bed and breakfast are, in, in my understanding, are not covered by health department, so I do think we need some of these in, so I would, I don't see any harm in leaving them there.
Okay, so we got four in and.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's ridiculous that we're gonna dictate how somebody runs their business, if, look at if the place is dirty, nobody's going to be there.
In, Tim in, Dave's in, Norm, are you in or out? Are they in or out?
Again, we're.
I think we are overstepping.
Jen, you're in?
Well, I'll tell you three fifths, yes.
I'm in, so we're gonna leave seven and eight, let's do eleven.
So you said eleven probably has to come out anyway?
Yes.
So eleven, I said, I had eleven coming out as well.
Eleven's coming out, everybody good with that? Okay, what else you got, Brad?
Penalties for offenses, again, I could steal a car and get less time. Um, I, I think it should be as simple as you break the rules once, you get a warning, second time you get a fine, third time you lose your permit. I, I think that's as simple as it has to be, the novice, the language about imprisoning people and.
How, how about if we make the motion that the penalty?
Legal requirement.
Right, isn't that like a standard thing?
I've got, I've got a couple, Dave.
Okay, hold on, are we, we're, we're gonna leave the penalties in as is?
But they still don't get that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but I, I don't like it in there and you just say nobody's gonna get that.
Can I just make a point on our last motion real quick? Three fifty-one point two, our purpose in our old code, it had in there, it is the purpose of this chapter to promote the health and safety morals and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Grand Island, so I think that was the idea of how they were trying to rewrite that into layman's terms.
Jamie, do you have anything?
No.
Jim?
No.
Norm, you're up.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the last month's discussion, but after reading this and looking at what's got changed, I do not agree that it's gonna be, should be limited to six people.
Good, what, what page, John, Norm?
First page. Bed and breakfast, six transits.
I think that came up in the top board as well.
Yes, it did, and I agree, I mean, if a family of seven comes here, they can't go to a bed and breakfast, that's ridiculous.
There were concerns with parties and bonfires and noise and whatnot, but I think we have.
C two. On page three.
Yeah.
Did you read that? Is that called, sorry?
C two, well, hold on, page what?
Amber's left.
Page three.
Action five, C.
Oh, C two, okay, yeah, this one. Maximum number of non overnight visitors, this is.
So maximum bed and breakfast shall be four per sleeping or guest room or six total, whichever is least.
But that's for non overnight visitors.
No, that's for overnight.
Overnight, that's overnight.
One is for overnight, two is for, you're in town and you're inviting twelve people over to come to your bed and breakfast.
So one is.
Which I thought was.
One is up to four per sleeping or guest room or six total, whichever is least, children under three don't count. So that's, I'm staying at the bed and breakfast, that's my limits. Now, number two are my visitors.
Okay. But once again, my seven kids.
With mind.
Go to one of these.
Well, that's one of them.
Well, if they're under the age of three.
Well, say they're not.
Well, then you have to, then you have to rent, then you have to rent two rooms.
What if you're renting all three? It doesn't matter, it says maximum of six.
Yes.
Even if you go to a hotel, they don't let you have seven kids and a husband and wife in one room.
I didn't say seven kids, I said seven people in their family couldn't come.
Well, that's the reason why you're renting a, a bed and breakfast, because it's multiple bedrooms, you're not just renting.
Well, then, but then it's covered. It's, it's four per sleeping room, so if I go there and rent your bed and breakfast, I'm renting two rooms.
Or six total, so it's four per room or six total.
Whichever is less.
Yeah, but.
I have three rooms.
Overnight shall be up to four per sleeping room or six total per sleeping room. Whichever, whichever is least. Well, I think that's.
No, it just says, it says four per sleeping room or six total.
I thought I'm reading it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, it says six on the first page too, so.
So you wanna take the six out?
I think it should be.
Per room?
I think it should be four per room.
Four per room.
Period.
Husband, wife, two kids?
About.
You have more kids?
Yeah, I'm gonna get to that, Amy, I mean, but, yeah, I mean, if two families come and go to a bed and breakfast and they, yeah, they could have four per room easily.
Right. Okay, so C one, we're gonna remove.
You gotta go back to the first page to start with.
Well, let me do C one, why, cuz we're on that one. C one, Arlene, is gonna be remove or six transients total, whichever is least.
Well, what's the maximum gonna be?
Four.
Four.
Per room. Per room. So it could be twelve.
So if we got twelve people that are sleeping there, we need to rent a bed and breakfast with three rooms or two different locations. Okay, back.
I believe what they have is they probably have a room that has bunk beds for kids.
Sure, they, she did, uh, the one lady got up and said one room's all set up for kids.
Bunk beds, right.
Okay, back to page one, Norm, where did you wanna change?
Definition of bed and breakfast there, it says six. I'm gonna have to change that to twelve.
Yeah, you're saying six total.
Yeah.
The three beds, not more than six.
Well, I think it was.
No, I would, it should say, it should say, uh, not more than three bedrooms and not more than four guests per room.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna do that, Arlene. Page one under bed and breakfast. Not more than, not more than three bedrooms and not more than four guests per room. Get, or, or transients, I guess they're calling them.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Okay.
Okay, and then back to what Amy picked up on too, a family comes with seven people in a van and they're gonna, got three bedrooms in this place. Three parking spots? No. I don't think you need three parking spots.
I, I thought, I thought the whole parking, I thought the whole parking thing was overdone anyway, they gotta be behind, they can't park in the driveway.
Want them like in the street, you know, you can't.
Yeah, but how many, how many houses have double and triple wide driveways, they can't.
Right, but on one level, every business and any kind of thing that's running here, we have some kind of parking regulations around it, so the idea is to get them off the street, and I can somewhat understand that in a residential, I mean, other places, but I think if you have four people per room, if, as far as the adults go, it's gonna kinda self-correct itself, cuz you're only really gonna allow three cars in the park, in the driveway. So if a family of six comes in a van and then another family comes in another car, so it's kinda, kinda, you're not gonna end up with forty cars cuz you can technically only have three cars.
But I think if you go back to the language that was in there to start with, under section five, C three, just leave what was in there. Once parking spot for a bed and breakfast with up to two guest rooms.
Yeah.
Two onsite parking spots for three guest rooms, I think that's fine.
Okay, what we, what we've approved in the past is one parking spot per guest room. Those are all been approved in the past, and they have to be outside of the front yard.
That's not what's written here, Dave.
Okay, what page, John?
Page three.
Page three.
Section five, C three. If you read.
Five, C three, got you.
What was originally there, now what's crossed out, I agree with what was originally there.
So, one parking space for bed and breakfast for each guest room, so if I have.
No, no, I didn't say that. One parking space for bed and breakfast with up to two guest rooms.
No, that's not what I got.
That's right.
Mine's what it crossed out.
Yeah, I know, but he's saying to restore it to what it was.
Yes.
One onsite parking place for a bed and breakfast with up to two rooms.
Casey, any issues on this parking?
Uh, not aware of any parking issues at any of our bed and breakfasts.
Okay.
Other than Autumn one.
So there's, oh, there's one, there's one site for up to two rooms and two sites up to, for up to three.
So then you're saying if I have three guest rooms, I only need two parking spaces.
Right.
What if you have three separate guests?
What if I have three separate guests, then where's that other guy gonna park?
There's not enough park.
Well, what if?
Parking.
If you have two guest rooms and there's two.
And you can't park in the street.
Clients.
Yeah, what if, what if, what if everybody comes with their own car? Right? I'm just, but I'm saying the same thing.
Well, but you can never have two guests, cuz you only have one parking spot. If you have two rooms and there's a couple in one and a couple in another, there're gonna be two separate cars.[1603.74]
Should be one parking space per guest room.
Per room.
Yeah, I mean.
So if you want.
Most you want breakfast, you have different people in each room.
He has to know, Tim.
Each have a car.
Be large families.
Well.
Yeah, but if Tim's gonna go to the same bed and breakfast I'm at, he's gonna take his car and his family, I'm gonna take my car and my.
But I just think three is impractical in a lot of these locations.
Right.
I mean, it's just.
It's true.
It's not gonna work for a lot of these bed and breakfasts.
I, I agree with us. I think it should be put back to the way it was.
If she wants three guest rooms, which are gonna go to the one that's on the table. Like Tim and I are saying, if she has three bedrooms to rent. Three separate people can rent there, she needs three separate parking places.
I agree, it just.
Not two, because then if I'm the third guy renting the third room, where do I park?
You can't park on the street.
You can't park on the street overnight, and I can't park, she's got it. As long as I'm, I can't park in front of her property, that's the front yard setback. So.
I'm one for one, and the other, you know, we look at the other examples that they've expanded parking and whatnot, this is.
Well, they're starting to park in the backyard or.
Yeah, like, yeah.
I kinda feel if you leave it this way, it might deter someone saying I wanna rent three of my rooms. Because now I gotta come up with three parking spots that I might not.
And why do we wanna deter someone?
Well, I'm sure Amber would, would wanna her to pack her bags and get out of there, but.
It's, you've got that many bedrooms, and it was kids, and they all got cars, you're gonna have the same thing in the driveway, so a big family gives us K I.
Yeah.
Let me, I gotta, I gotta tell you something, long before all this happened with the Airbnb and the bed and breakfast. There were multiple running, up and running in the Sandy Beach neighborhood.
Right, but the thing is.
For years, and there was never any issue. So we had one issue where somebody rented one and they had a college graduation party or something. On West River, and it caused all this hoopla, and now we are over regulating the crap out of people.
Right, which, which is why we can't point out specific bed and breakfasts. So the question is, is do, do we want cars on the street or not? So if there's three, if we have three bedrooms, is it okay to have cars on the street? That's really the question, are we, is.
It should have to be parked.
But they have three bedrooms.
It should have to be.
Have three parking spots.
It should have to be in, on that property, whether it's in their driveway or alongside of the garage, whatever. But why can't they park, but why can't they park in the driveway?
As long as the driveway.
These rules state they have to be behind.
Behind the front of the house, behind the front.
So they can't.
I think out of the right of way is what they mean, right?
Yeah, but I mean, so I can't park. Right, so they can't park in front of the garage door.
Yeah.
Why can't they park in the driveway?
Well, I think. Go ahead, hang on, Casey, go ahead, Casey. Go ahead, Casey.
Code does say nobody can park in setback unless it's on a driveway. The way we kind of interpret it and enforce that, we don't tell people they can't park in the driveway.
Right.
So they can park in the driveway.
So I think you could allow someone in a bed and breakfast to park in the driveway, as long as on the driveway, we don't wanna park in the grass. As long as on the driveway.
Okay.
Because they can, you can park in their garage, that's one parking spot.
Yeah, my argument is just staying off the street, that's what I thought we were talking.
Yes.
Yeah.
So let's just.
Having two dedicated parking spots then, and dri- parking in the driveway would be okay.
Just point of emphasis, because some of the things we saw in the past, so, okay, somebody goes, oh, and throws in a, a, a driveway into the front. Yep, so you got your driveway coming up to your house, and then they throw some wing in the front yard. Are you guys going to settle for doing something like that? Be careful what you say.
That's right.
I have one of mine.
Well, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know people.
Mine is like that too.
Yeah, so I mean.
So a couple of things considered, number one, uh, blocking the signs, and that's a big concern, and that's why everybody says stay out of the right of way. That's the general rule there, because we don't want the sidewalks blocked, we don't want the kids walking around. Number two, who's ever been to a bed and breakfast and parked in the garage, because parking's good. So I really, so I would.
I've been to a bed and breakfast once in my lifetime.
It could be at the owner's spot, though, right?
What's that? That could be the owner's shirt.
I don't like talking in the morning.
Use of garage, as a designated parking spot for the bed and breakfast.
If you don't have the three designated parts, I'm three, I'm going for a three bedroom. If I don't have three designated parking spots, and we allow them to park in the driveway, which generally driveway is only a one lane in. Now, I get up at five o'clock and I wanna go, there's a car in my way, I can't get up.
Okay, that's when you get bad stars in the bed.
I'm either gonna have to wake that guy up to move his car, or I'm gonna drive over the lawn.
There's a gazillion different scenarios.
And they won't be back.
Right, and there, and there's no keys.
You need three.
Well, then you gotta leave your key, the owner of the bed and breakfast.
I think that's, I think that's an owner, I think that's their problem to deal.
So we, I was at one in Niagara on the Lake, and they said, how many vehicles you bringing? We told them three. They made us send the measurements of the vehicles, make sure that they're gonna fit between the sidewalk and the peak, because they didn't want the side, few cars are pulling.
So I mean, it can be just as simple as.
And it was like a, it was an absolute, if you broke that rule, they were gonna come ask you. And that was, that, of course, that's Canada, you know, but it was just like, whoa, they're not playing around, so.
I know, you could have been executed in Canada.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm good for the one space per room. Tim?
Yeah.
Tim is good, Amy, where are you? Brad's a no.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No, Dave, where are you at?
I'm a yes, one.
Okay, so, so we're leaving it, so it stays, three stays. Okay, anybody got anything else on this?
But, okay, just like, clarify, one of those spaces could be the driveway.
No.
Why not?
Why not? What do you?
As long as it's the driveway and it's not in the front yard setback.
You're, you mean, one of those spaces.
So they can't park in front of the garage door?
Not if it's in the front yard setback.
Where the house is, if the house is at setback, you cannot use the driveway then for your.
Some of them.
Bob, what house is it setback?
All of them.
Yeah.
I mean, unless, unless it's.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
If you were.
Crazy.
I would add that in here, make it clear.
What's, what's that, Casey?
All of the parking spaces, all three or whatever, but have to be behind the front yard setback.
Okay, Floyd, that in there, please.
Or behind the sidewalk.
Those are two very different things.
Cannot imagine you're making people put parking behind their house.
No, well, usually they've been putting it on their side of their home.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't agree with it.
Places on the side of their house, Dave, to me, they can't do it, there's not enough room.
You talk about not wanting to look like a commercial enterprise, let's just concrete the whole yard.
There's not enough room.
Well, we don't want them in the front yard setback, and we don't want them, like Bob said, building a little driveway out.
That would be fine.
Why can't they park in the driveway? Why is that driveway sacred?
Because you want fishing, and me and my wife.
Again, again.
My wife are leaving, and your car is in the way.
Bed and breakfast.
Again.
Places to have a two car garage. One side is usually open all the time.
Do we, do we regulate McDonald's to make sure their milkshake machine works? Please, enough with this.
We don't.
Yes.
Well, there's, there's a parking requirement in the code.
And the code's wrong.
And the code's been there, and we've been approving these, that they have to have s- specific parking space for their guests.
Just like any other business.
Yeah.
Make sure it says, yeah, just, well, make sure it's clear, that's, make sure it's clear.
Clear that it's.
Are we adding all parking spaces behind setback, is that what we're adding?
Out of, out of the front yard.
I say go behind the sidewalk.
Yep.
I say sidewalk.
I'm gonna tell you, the sidewalk was, was my trigger.
I think the sidewalk's fine with me, so.
Sidewalk was my trigger, and I didn't like to say that people are calling the garage a parking space.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
That's just.
Well, let's.
Cheating.
Well, then I'm gonna start adding stuff saying that each spot has to be fully accessible. And no vehicles can be parked behind each other, because they all have to be able to get in and out.
Let's just leave it this way, at this time, and then the town board can deal with it.
But, let me also say that if you don't get to resolutions tonight, this isn't a fireproof.
Right.
We're just trying to update it, because we can't, we see problems.
Okay, let's leave that in, because we did say that we were good with that. Yard setback.
No, I don't agree with that.
Well, we can, we gotta vote, so you can vote no, Brad.
I'm voting no.
Well, we haven't got that far.
Okay, just so you know.
Please.
We know where Brad's standing.
Go with the last thing.
Okay.
Are we, you're leaving A as we, as it is crossed out, right? Three A, onsite parking for bed and breakfast for each approved guest room.
One parking space for bed and breakfast for each approved guest room.
Page three, are we gonna add, say, put B, all parking spaces behind sidewalk?
Behind front yard setback.
No, no, there's two different things.
That's two different.
Two different things.
In front of the house, and you're saying.
I'm sorry?
Right, the sidewalk is not at setback, no, no, space is at setback.
No, that's, we're saying one parking space per guest room, not in the front yard setback.
Right, that means so from the front of the house back.
Don't agree.
Behind your garage door, even with your.
You know from setback, that means you cannot park on the driveway, you have to be in the garage.
In the garage or on the side.
The house back on the side.
Or the side, is which we've made everybody else do in the past.
Well, is that good, is that a good practice?
I, I don't know.
That's why I said I think it's wrong.
Well, let's just, we gotta make, make a motion, I gotta start somewhere, so we're gonna leave that in, and then if the motion fails, the motion fails. So I'm leaving that in, that they cannot park in the front yard setback.
Okay.
Says required front yard, yeah, is that different?
No, required front yard is, in case the required front yard is the front yard setback.
Correct.
That's, that's, you can put your house further back, that's a minimum.
Some, some are like that, actually.
They want, make it clear.
Yep, that's, that's, okay, okay. Anybody got anything else?
I do.
Oh, my God, okay.
I know, keep things, I'm sorry, go back. So on, for number eleven.
Okay.
We were talking about they had to put a sign on the front door, we know that's gonna go away if the owners.
We took that out.
Right, but do we have anything that says you can't put a B and B sign on your front lawn?
Well, that would be the sign code.
And I looked in the sign code, it doesn't say anything about B and Bs from what I saw, so we may wanna clarify that or add that in that we don't want.
Casey, wouldn't that be a sign code? Like, I can't put a construction sign in my front yard, Bruno's Construction.
I think you are allowed to have.
Bert, there's some small business.
Dave, I know, I know that came up with you at one time, Dave, about them having some kind of sign.
We did a sign for.
I recall, I recall that it's not allowed in the sign ordinance, but I don't have that in front of me.
We did a sign for somebody on East River that was, I don't know what they're doing, acupuncture or something.
West River, because it was the common driveways that split back to the one house.
No, no, on East River, somebody had that.
But it was for a home.
Yeah.
And it's on their mailbox.
But we don't distinguish bed and breakfast, so I think we should distinguish.
Isn't it on their mailbox? Oh, I thought it was on their.
Restanding sign.
Okay.
Home occupation, we allow to a certain size, but bed and breakfast isn't defined. So I, I thinking we say, no, we don't want bed and breakfast signs in the front of bed and breakfasts, or we do, but that's what I'm saying, it's nowhere in the code.
I don't, I don't think there should be a sign.
Okay.
Bed and breakfast in the middle of a front lawn.
Amy, where are you at on the sign?
It's not there, so, but if we're doing this.
Sign?
No.
I mean, I don't have a problem with them, if they have a.
No sign, Norm's no, so no sign, we'll just leave that out.
All right.
Next quote.
And the last one, page two.
Page two.
Or, I'm sorry, E, yeah, E six.
Gotta be behind the sidewalk.
And the co- the comment is, so, instead of the town police department, I was looking at the old code. Instead of saying, um, two inspections, it should be by the town or another duly authorized law enforcement officers.
Totally changed that.
Okay, Casey, why are we involving the police department with inspections? Is there a reason?
Because if they have more than the allowed number of people on site. We would be closed, most likely, Friday, except they're not, right?
Right?
They would turn out more, why the option, that has, please go there, please verify.
Okay.
The old.
People not arrest everybody.
Yeah, but we're not, we don't really care about the old code, we're looking at this document, so.
Right.
I got it, so if you're closed Friday at five, and I have a big giant party at my bed and breakfast, then the police would come. And do whatever they gotta do. So then that would stay.
At least verify.
Right.
Oh, I don't disagree, I just was.
I mean, they can't make people leave, but they.
No.
Any authorized law enforcement.
What about?
Right.
We do have the sheriff, though, so the town, you know, uh, another law enforcement might cover, because it says town police. Uh, we need to cover the sheriff too.
It was my thought, just change the law enforcement, yes, it's, you know.
Authorized.
Authorized law enforcement official.
All right, you wanna take town, town out and just put the police department? It would cover all the police departments?
Yeah, leave town, town, and instead of just police department, just duly authorized law enforcement officers, that's.
Okay, or, did you catch that one, Arlene, no?
Yeah.
That's section three, E six.
So, let me just put a little press on that real quick, if you don't mind. So, real quick, code enforcement doesn't work in the weekend.
Sure.
Right, if there's a problem, you can call code enforcement on Monday, whenever he's gone, yeah.
Well, now.
It's, it's the idea of just.
So, right, well, let me ask you, what, what are the, what's the police gonna do when they get there? Going and count? You got three rooms, how many people are here?
Make sure it's soap.
Right, I mean, we can't get, we can't get. Hold on, we can't get squatters out of a house, but the sheriff's department's gonna come over and say, hey, your kid's gotta go.
Well, it'd probably be noise ordinance and.
Uh, that's for a big party.
Right.
The place can go there, yes, I saw a big party.
Right, right. Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
So I, I ran it, I ran it through a couple, and they decided to have a wedding reception. That's basically.
No.
Well, as long as it's not more than twelve people, it's okay.
It just covers everything.
Visitors, they.
Hang on, hang on, Arlene. Okay, hang on, Arlene.
You're saying, or other town duly authorized law enforcement.
Other authorized official.
Take out town police department, just say town or other duly authorized.
I was taking out police department.
Right.
Duly authorized official. Duly authorized official, don't say law enforcement. That leaves it wide open for.
Game ward.
Assistance.
We can send Pete over.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm already gonna be at the party, so.
Okay, Arlene, is it possible for you to read that back? So that's my motion, or do we wanna just, does someone wanna second that?[1593.28]